By way of introduction, my name is Matt Comcar and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'd like to call to order the meeting of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and we have a roll call.
Commissioner Majewski?
Present.
Commissioner Sizer?
Here.
Commissioner Strasky?
Here.
Commissioner Buckwinder?
Present.
Commissioner Craig?
Here.
Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Chair Campar?
Present. Thank you. Okay, minutes has everyone reviewed the minutes? Of the?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. And a roll call.
Commissioner Majewski?
Epstein.
Commissioner Sizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckwinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Chair Campar?
Aye. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Next is communication. Communications Director?
Uh, yes, Chairman Carr, Car, Plan Commissioners, Rob Eastwood, you know, Director, uh, no communications or general communications.
Okay, thank you for that. Next is agenda modification or postponements. None, okay, thank you. Oral communication. So this is a portion of the meeting that is reserved for individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters of community concern that are not listed on the agenda. In the interest of time, the Chair may limit speakers to five minutes. Please be aware that state law prohibits the Commission from acting on non-agendized items. However, the Chair may refer the matter to staff for follow-up. Are there any oral communications? Seeing none in house, anybody on the line? No? Okay. Uh, we move on to our public hearing. Okay. Before we start on the public here, are there any disclosures that Commissioners would like to?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 uh, went by the two items, the, the parcels that were on the two items for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I visited both.
You visited both, huh? Okay. The Commissioner Majewski? No?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so we have two items to hear. The first one is fourteen forty Westmont Avenue Site and Architecture Review Permit and a Tree Removal Permit. It's a public hearing to consider the application of Kathleen Williams of Kathleen Williams Architects to allow construction of a new approximately four thousand two hundred and forty square foot, two-story, single-family residence and removal of one coast live oak tree on property located at fourteen forty Westmont Avenue. The application under consideration is a site and architectural review permit and tree removal permit, file number two zero two three dash one seventy-two. Staff?
Uh, thank you. Good evening Commissioners, Street and Plan Associate Planner presenting all the items today. Okay, so the project site is located at fourteen forty Westmont Avenue. Um, it is a flag lot, as kind of noted on the shape of the screen there. Um, that was previously approved through a parcel map in twenty sixteen. Um, that parcel map allowed for the lot to be split from one lot to two lots, and so that's how this lot was created. And the lot, um, is currently vacant. The property does have a zoning designation of R one nine, um, which is a single-family district, and it does have a general plan designation of low-density residential. The applicant is proposing the construction of a new, um, two-story, single-family residence of approximately four thousand two hundred and forty square feet and the removal of one protected tree, um, which is the coast live oak tree. This is the only protected tree that is proposed for removal. Uh, so on the screen here, you see the site plan. Um, you'll kind of notice the driveway access and the turnaround radius. Uh, this two-story home was kind of built in this rear portion of the lot because the fire turnaround radius was required by the fire department. Um, as this is an existing lot, the driveway, you'll notice kind of meanders. It's likely that during the time of the lot split in twenty sixteen, um, the me, the meandering was done as a result of saving a couple of trees at the front of the property and in the right of way. On the screen here, you'll have the floor plans, um, on the left-hand side, it's the floor plan for the first story, and then on the right-hand side, it's the floor plan for the second story. And then here is the proposed landscape plan. Um, you'll notice that there are trees on a property that are proposed to be retained, it's kind of shown as, um, a grade-out dotted line, if you will, or dotted circles, I suppose, um, and a healthy planting, if you will, of trees around the shared property lines and have indicated by the larger circles. Also, as mentioned earlier, the applicant is proposing to remove only one protected tree, um, which is the coast live oak tree that measures approximately sixteen inches in diameter. Um, the tree that is proposed for removal, or rather, the one protected tree proposed for removal is shown in the green sort of circle. Um, so it's located in this area of the site. You'll notice on this sheet that there are other trees proposed for removal. Um, these are not considered to be protected trees, they're just simply too small and therefore do not require a permit from the city to remove. So they are able to do those for removal today, the only one that is under review right now is the one, uh, coast live oak tree. Um, so in your packet, um, there is, as an attachment, there is an arborist, um, letter. The arborist retained by the applicant did inspect this protected coast live oak tree twice, um, once in twenty twenty-one and the other in twenty twenty-three. And based on the arborist's letter, the protected tree is in fairly poor condition. Um, there seems to be a lot of heavy bleeding both at the base of the trunk and also further up the tree. Um, and there has been a decay towards the base of the tree that has been noted by the arborist. And based on these two, um, site inspections, there hasn't been any kind of improvements of health in this tree. And the photos that you see on the screen now are just the photos, um, noting where the areas of damage and decay, um, and they are, um, grabbed from the arborist's letter. And so just as a reminder to the Planning Commission and information for folks in the audience, um, with the passing of Senate Bill Nine, or SB nine for short, in twenty twenty-one, uh, state law did clarify that ministerial approval of one or two residential units were required. And so as defined by law, ministerial approval means that it cannot involve any kind of personal judgment. Um, and the project needs to comply with objective standards and is only held to objective standards. So objective standards in this context are things like the floor area ratio or FAR, um, lot coverage, height setbacks. Um, and as noted in the staff report, the project is complying with all of these items. Um, the Planning Commission is further limited in requesting project alterations and it can't, um, and the project cannot be denied if it complies with the objective standards. Um, while the city does not currently have any objective standards that kind of touch upon concepts like key with a character or protection of privacy. Um, and so the project cannot be held to those kind of subject, subjective statements. Um, but I will say the project has made a good faith effort in proposing a traditional architectural style, um, and was mindful of um, any kind of privacy impacts by limiting large windows on the second floor. Um, and also retaining some trees that could be saved and planting a slew of new trees around property lines to help obscure like sightlines. Um, staff did receive public comment on this item, um, the written communication has been, um, included in your packet as an attachment. Um, the kind of comments that staff received on this project are summarized on the slide. Um, I'll also note that I did receive a phone call earlier today from a resident inquiring about, um, the plans, wanting to see them. Um, and staff had sent tonight's packet, which is inclusive of the plans, uh, to that resident. Um, on that phone conversation, there were some questions regarding the tree that was proposed for removal, um, and privacy impacts. Um, and based on conversations, um, with the applicant, uh, whose team is here tonight, um, the applicant party has been in contact with the folks that submitted, um, public comments, um, or other portion of the folks submitted the comment. Um, and the applicant team can certainly elaborate, um, on those communications, if the Commission have any, uh, specific questions. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission do adopt a resolution approving the new my two-story house, removal of one protected tree, uh, coast live oak tree, and finding the project is up from CECL. And this does include staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, questions for staff? Please, um, okay, why don't we start with?
Okay, thanks. I was stressed.
Sark Report? Uh, actually, apologies, yeah, let's, let's hear the Sark Report first.
Just in order, I want to hear your question. But, uh, and it's captured in the notes, but I think the main thing we ended up talking about was the tree. Uh, Maggie, uh, sorry, Corey asked some good questions. Uh, the driveway configuration just seemed odd. We would want to understand a little bit more about that, but got into the minutia about wire code that required it to be that way. Uh, it is a big house, however, it meets every standard that we can hold it to, so we were supportive of the project. Corey, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I did see there was a comment about the tree. Um, I am a certified arborist, so that was my main interest in this, um, reviewing this project. Um, based on a very limited, obviously, assessment, um, just from photos, I would be extremely concerned about retaining that tree even regardless of there being a project, so that was my main, um, the main thing that was brought up for me, and I, I am in agreement with the arborist's report.
Okay, thank you for that. Back to Maggie.
Thanks. So given what you said about the requirement for ministerial approval, what is there to evaluate by the Planning Commission?
Um, it's more or less affirming that the project complies with the objective standards, um, which are like FAR, lot coverage, setbacks, and height.
But that's objective, so there's really nothing for us to add along those lines?
Right, more or less, because of the passing of SB nine.
But is that? It had to go to Sark, too.
Is there a change, so what change would be required for this process to be eliminated for SB nine?
So, uh, I know the Plan Commission has dealt with this for quite some time, um, with the passage of state laws and making projects this size ministerial, but on the Campbell Ordinance Code, it's still designated to as a pool of bodies, so there's inherent conflict. Uh, we have taken to the council an interim ordinance that changes that, um, that was to respond to the new state laws. So, uh, the read, the read I got from our planners, uh, was tonight is likely the last single-family home projects you will see that come to you that have this inherent conflict of ministerial planning.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Commissioners, this is.
So, would have, if we were administrative mode, uh, would it come here because of the tree removal? The tree removal still comes to Planning Commission?
Uh, no, the tree removal is something that is reviewed by staff. The code does allow a process in which a, if a development application is submitted, then we can sort of do a batching of applications, if you will. So that's why the tree removal is included here, but both, um, under current, uh, rules and regulations would both be staff approvals.
Okay. I, I, I noticed the driveway thing, too, so the, the reasoning behind the driveway thing is because of fire code and pulling in a a fire truck and being able to turn around, that kind of thing?
Uh, yes, for the turnaround radius, um, it was required, it was required by the fire department because the site, the base, not only based on the configuration, but I think it's the depth of the site that required a fire truck to be able to be onsite and then turn around. They don't generally like to back up, especially at a distance, it can present other challenges, um, but.
And the flag light, the, the fact that it's a flag lot where you have to drive in, that's the, that's what caused this, right?
Right, because it's a comi, a combination of the lot configuration, so yes, it being a flag lot and the depth of the lot, um, because certain houses on the street, let's say if they are not a flag lot configuration, fire is able to serve from the street directly. But because the home in this case would be set back, given that it's a flag lot, um, they needed to get onsite to serve, and so they would, they had required that turnaround. And so there was a lot of aspects in do, in designing this home, and I'm sure the applicant team can speak to this more, but there was a lot of uh, constraints, if you will, because of the turnout radius, which is, you know, not exactly the smallest thing to accommodate on site. And given that it's a flag lot, um, but they were able to have multiple conversations with the fire department. And at this point, the fire department is satisfied with what are they, what they are proposing.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Okay. There comes the Craig, or?
Yeah, yeah, and that same theme that we've been talking about here, Trace, so, uh, uh, can the plant? I know that, well, this, this is our last one with SB nine type of, uh, approval for the plant, can the Planning Commission ever give, does the Planning Commission in any city give ministerial approval, or by definition, is that just staff?
Um, I'm not aware of any Planning Commission cities, um, kind of in this region that have, that give ministerial approvals, those are usually delegated to staff.
Yeah, I would think so, I was just curious. And then, and also on that same theme, uh, you made, we made a point, which is a great, great point, that the, uh, applicant made good faith efforts to design this in, in keeping with the area, which is great. Uh, but if the applicant had not made any good faith efforts, but it still had met all the objective criteria, would the staff's uh, report have changed in any way?
No, it would not have changed, um, because at the end of the day, we are needing to look at whether or not the project complies with objective standards.
Okay, and two other quick questions, and I wasn't sure, this, when I, when I looked at the site, it just was so familiar to me, do we have an item on the, on the front, on the house on the front?
That's correct, the, uh, house at fourteen thirty, which is just the next door neighbor here, was in front of the Commission, I think, late last year.
Okay, yeah, I remember the neighbor, uh, talking, and, and then just a final question, or, cause it wasn't in your report, but just to make sure I got it right, so even with the, the trees that they're getting rid of, apparently the site is going to result in, still, there'll still be eighteen trees, or only eight is required on that site, that.
Right, right, they definitely do exceed the minimum number of trees as required by the Santa Moss area neighborhood. Now, that is also another objective standard, it's one per two thousand, uh, net lot area, um, and they will have an exceedance of that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bookpinder? Now, the only question I had was whether the tree removal permit would be bundled, and it seems like it would. Um, this, this whole thing would not show up in front of us, so, I think that's.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Majewski, do you have any other questions?
Nothing more for me.
Thank you, Vice Chair, no? Uh, so, uh, I have a couple of questions, um. One of them was, I see the gate that's installed towards the back of the entrance driveway. Looks pretty, it looks, it looks very nice. My question or maybe concern is that, I think it's set a little too far in. So being a gate, it could be closed sometimes. And if the car enters this driveway, let's say at night, or when visibility is not there, you enter and the gates close, and you go, oh, oh, I can't go, and now you have to back out this long windy driveway, and uh, you know, if it's night, it's not even going to be lighted, you know, um, that would present an issue, you know, have they done anything to address that answer?
Uh, based on my conversations with the applicant, there is an intention and an interest to put lighting along the driveway. Um, not like it's going to be a ten-foot pole kind of light, because that could be impactful to neighbors, or rather, um, some lighting that helps illuminate the driveway.
Maybe hang it from the fence and facing down, just so the driver is visible, so if you have to drive back, backwards, you don't fall into, or you don't hit the neighbor's fences, um, and towards the end, that curve to go in, that's going to be pretty tricky. Any thoughts about bringing the fence closer? So you basically could see it if it's open before you even enter into the driveway, or?
Uh, well, I suppose that's a question for the applicant, um, if it's too close, though, it might, um, you know, cause we would need to make sure that it complies with our code requirements, um, for location, not wanting to impede any kind of vision triangle situations. Uh, it is a little bit tricky, just because I think there are, given that it's an existing lot and it's an existing condition, um, there may be other ways to kind of mitigate the concern, um, from at least the fire department. I do know that, well, for one, there needs to be a mailbox that's placed for service. And so usually mailboxes have, will have the address number, and so to ensure that mail gets delivered to the right mailbox. Um, so that could be one solution, another solution could be, you know, adding additional signage, noting that this driveway is for which house, so before people start driving down the driveway, it's very clear. I mean, I would hope that it's not something that happens often, um, but I feel like there may be other ways to, uh, mitigate, um, the concern. Either additional signage, you know, some additional, um, lighting along the driveway, things like that.
Is the, um, where's the gate in relationship to the house?
Uh, the gate is, the gate is, um, more or less at the end of the pole, part of the, uh, flag lot, if you will.
Okay, but i- i- is that like the back, you know, there's a house, there's a house there, right? In, in the front?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the driveway goes along the side of that house?
Correct.
Okay, I was just curious as to where the gate is and whether or not that has something to do with where the gate is in terms of where the, where the house ends or begins, or?
You're referring to the neighbor's house?
The neighbor's house, right.
Well, in addition to the gate, there's also going to be a shared fence in that area, um, and so I believe the gate kind of occurs towards the end or the rear of the front neighbor's fourteen thirties property.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, here, seeing no other question, um, let's see, um, I think we're going to open the public, we're going to open it to the, um, applicant. Is the applicant here? Okay, if you could, if you'd like to address the Commission, you have five minutes.
Thank you, I knew that was going to happen. Hello to the Commission and to staff, um, my name's Lauren Jean Rice, I am the hopeful resident of this home at fourteen forty Westmont.
Welcome.
Um, I'm, you know, we're here to answer any questions you might have. Um, understood that the trees in the driveway are a little bit funky, um, so happy to, you know, provide any additional context or anything else you may have for us.
Okay, so let's start from this end, Commissioner Bookpinder, any questions for the only?
No.
You, okay, no, no questions?
I have no question, no questions.
Vice Chair? I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Majewski?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, so I'd like to ask you regarding the location of the gate?
Yes.
And, you know, how did you decide that that's a good location?
Yes, absolutely, it was an attempt to be strategic, the gate is right where the square kind of starts. And there's a five-foot fence that juts out, um, basically into the driveway, if you will. And we decided that that would be a good spot since it starts in the square, and then it would be a natural place for the mechanical box to kind of fit in that little L shape, uh, where that five-foot piece of fence juts out.
Mechanical box to open the gate.
Correct, so it'd swing basically towards the box, if you will.
All right, right. Um, uh, any concern about, let's say you order Uber, Uber Eats, and the gates are closing?
Yes, um, like we mentioned, um, it will be lit, um, if not for a delivery driver, um, which I'm sure will happen for myself, driving there late at night, it's about a hundred and fifty-foot stretch, so it is quite, you know, quite a length. Um, so I believe one side will have greenery with some lighting kind of built into that side for myself, anyone visiting the property, um, and then, like you mentioned, the bend to accommodate those trees is right at the front, uh, kind of right off of Westmont, um, and basically, uh, I spoke with Daniel Fama, who is the planner, that was part of the original lot split between fourteen thirty and us at fourteen forty. And there's basically kind of an unwritten requirement to keep those trees, so, um, it's just kind of our good faith effort to maintain what the city has asked of us.
Um, as far as lighting, what do you think about motion sensing lighting, or just?
I figure it'll be on a timer, so we'll probably leave it on until, you know, let's say nine, nine-thirty at night, a reasonable hour, so that it doesn't, of course, impede on any neighbors, um, or waste energy for that matter, um, so we figured it'll be on a, on a daily timer.
Okay, you know, that's, that's fine, um, I, that satisfies me, any, uh, any questions from what you've heard? Otherwise, um, well, okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Um, next we go to, and we had no questions for her, are there public here that would like to address what you have heard? Here or online? Okay, seeing none, and in that case, I'm going to close public hearing. Then back to staff, for any, um, any questions that you, uh, that you'd like to address before we start our discussion?
No more comments from staff at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, commission discussion.
I'll stand.
Okay.
So, you know, for the benefit of anybody who may be looking on or will in the future, I mean, we had a couple of complaint emails, and they're not, I guess they're not here tonight. I, I think we addressed the fact that this is pretty straightforward, that it meets all the objective criteria. I, I suspect that maybe, as we know, that these people, the folks that have, that have complacied may not be familiar with the state laws that are now in place, that as long as this meets subjective criteria, that there's very little that we can do in terms of, well, we can't do anything in terms of subjective criteria. I, I just want to comment on one letter from Matthew Clark, and I, I was, you know, there's actually certain things that he has said about the history of the Dalton and Campbell that I don't disagree with, but I, I found his, I found his, the tone of his argument, and, and the blaming and name-calling to be less than desirable from my point of view, so, we, we could, we could, we could have a meeting about, about how, how cities have been developed in the last forty or fifty years, in terms of urban planning, and I'm sure we'd get lots of opinions about that, but I, I was more, I was more bothered by the tone and his pointing finger, fingers at, at the city, and obviously with past, with past commissions and councils, so I just wanted to get that into the record. And as far as the other one, which was apparently a neighbor, I, I, we always under, we always try to understand what neighbors' concerns are. My take is that there's a lot of two-story buildings, and there's lots of two-story homes, and that are close together in this neighborhood. Right there, this is like one of the last lots to be filled, and that we can't, we can't be concerned about whether or not, you know, the light is being blocked, because this is pretty much the standard of what the neighborhood is composed of at this point in time. So I just wanted to make comments on those two letters. Otherwise, I, I see, I, I certainly support the, 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 this home going through.
Okay, thank you for that, anybody else?
Thank you for those comments, I'm also supportive of the project, it complies with all the city's codes, and therefore, hence my comments earlier, and I am supportive of the project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bookbinder?
I'm just very excited that staff is updating code, I think it's just a bad experience all around for people to leave some pretty vitriolic comments. I think we can tell the public that this is a process where, like, we don't have discretion because of state law, but I don't think that really sinks through, like, comes to a hearing, that doesn't really make sense, so I think it's just going to be, people will be a lot happier, because I think people put a lot of effort and passion into those letters, and those letters will, by legal necessity, go nowhere. So I'm just appreciate staff doing that. I have no particular comments about the proposal, other than that it clearly fits our objective standards, and that's all there is to say about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the project's fine, yeah, just shout out to the, to the applicant, it's nice that they, you know, gave the good faith effort and worked with the neighbors, it's really nice to see that, you know, they don't have to do that, and it doesn't really matter in terms of the approval, but I think in general, we get a lot of those in Campbell, which, and I, I'm glad Commissioner Zister pointed that out, that, that, now one letter, I've been on the commission seven and a half years, easily the most strident letter, at least in the planning commission, I think the city council might have got a few worse, but, and we've had some really, really controversial projects, and some really angry people, but, yeah, that was just a little spry, and it's just too bad, and I, I, in general, you know, a lot of the, no, I shouldn't say that, a lot of us, you know, greater density, it's, it's a heartache, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, plan the best we can for greater densities and the new realities, so, anyway, this project is fine, no problems, thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Majewski?
Yeah, nothing further, just in support of the project, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, short and sweet.
Supportive, I'm glad that we won't bring these to SARC and planning. I would love to just speed these up, because we heard a little bit about the journey, if you look in here, they started the tree part of this in twenty twenty-one, still make a lot, like, this is taking too long, for, I think, a variety of reasons, some of which are in our control, some of which are not, but, I'm glad you're getting to build this home, and I hope we can do our part to make this faster, just across the city in these kinds of projects, but very supportive, happy to see it come in.
Wonderful, I will echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and supportive, I think you guys have done a great job with the constraints that you've had, and thank you for the explanation for the gate, and we're all supportive.
I'll make a motion that the Campbell Planning Commission approve a site and architectural review permit and tree removal permit, PLN twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-two, to allow construction of a new approximately forty-two hundred and forty square foot, two-story, single-family residence, and removal of one post live oak tree on property located at fourteen forty Westmont Avenue.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, we have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, let's have a roll.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Zister?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Vice Chair Field?
Aye.
Chair Campa?
Okay, with that, that item passes unanimously, thank you. We will move on to the next item. Second item is item number three, and it is, it is public hearing to consider the application of David Kopamaki of KUOP Designs to allow the demolition of an existing single-family dwelling, and construction of approximately three thousand one hundred thirty-five square feet, single-story, single-family dwelling, and a fence exception to allow an eight-foot-tall fence along the rear and side yards, or a six-foot-tall fence would otherwise be allowed on property. Okay, that's seven seventy-four Old Orchard. That's, and, that's the PLN two zero two four dash one twenty-seven, staff?
Thank you so much, Chair. So as mentioned, the item before you is a site and architectural review permit to allow the demolition of an existing single-story, single-family home, and the construction of a new single-story, single-family home with fence exception. The project's site is located in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, it is an R one sixteen zoning district, which is the city's largest single-family zoning district. It's got a general plan classification as low-density residential, it's a smaller lot, though, with a point two one seven gross acreage, and it's located along the east side of Old Orchard Road, and backs up against the Santa Moss Expressway, as moved on the project, on the aerial map on the east side, and it's generally surrounded by other low-density residential, single-family land uses. The administrative procedure is briefly discussed in the previous application, is ministerial in nature, through the passage of SB nine last year. However, as mentioned, SB four fifty, an SB four fifty ordinance was adopted in January of this year, however, despite this new ordinance, this application is being reviewed under the previous municipal code and SB nine provisions to, due to its ongoing application status. The applicant also did not decide to withdraw and resubmit as a building permit, and so the project will continue to be reviewed under these formal standards as, as a site and architecture review permit. So as mentioned, the proposed project is a new single-family dwelling, it's going to be a three thousand one hundred and thirty-five square foot, single-story, single-family dwelling, accompanied with a fence exception request to allow an eight-foot-tall fence where a, along the rear and side yard, where a six-foot-tall fence would otherwise be permitted. The fence along this interior sides is redwood, it's considered a high-quality material, with a one-foot lattice on top of a seven-foot-tall opaque fence. So the next slide will show the front facade of the proposed building, a very minimalist, traditional boxy, I'm sorry, very minimalist, modern boxy design, and then the proposed redwood fence, the fence is actually existing, so this is a legalization of an existing eight-foot-tall fence. As mentioned earlier, this is, this project will be reviewed ministerially, which means it needs to meet the objective of design and development standards found within the municipal code and within the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. In addition to several findings, these findings are included in the staff report, those included in the agenda, and are also seen here on the screen. However, while the site and architectural review permit findings will be based on ministerial or objective standards, the fence exception findings are still subjective, and the planning commission can hold discretion to determine whether or not the proposal meets these findings. And for that reason, staff does recommend that the planning commission should adopt a resolution approving the site and architecture review permit. It's not considered an additional fence exception permit, so it's just a site and architectural review permit today. And I can now take questions at this time.
Thank you very much, any questions for staff, would you like to start?
Do you want to do the SARC report?
I'm sorry, thank you. Two for two.
It's all right, this one was even more straightforward, we, I ask about who owns the sound wall. That was a curiosity to me, of who owns the Santa Moss sound wall, I can't actually remember what you said. No, it wasn't, that's why it was interesting.
Yes, so it was difficult even for staff to figure out, so I asked our senior engineer, Roger Storres, who I'm not sure if is in attendance tonight, for, to conduct some additional research, and he just mentioned that the records are so old and hard to discern, that it's, even our public works department is not entirely sure who owns it, the fence is built along the property, the rear property line, so we're, we'll be legalizing it tonight, just in case it does, for some reason, go away, they could build up the same fence back in the same place, or mix and pairs, though, most likely it is owned by the county.
Santa Moss is owned by the county, Santa Moss Road is?
The expressway is within the county's jurisdiction.
So we talked about that, and otherwise, the property itself, at the standards, and?
Okay, yeah. Is the sound wall six feet, or is the sound wall eight feet tall?
The sound wall is also eight feet, thus, thus retaining consistency with the proposal to have an eight-foot-tall fence on the sides.
Okay, thank you for that, so now back to Commissioner Zister?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications, so there is an existing eight-foot wooden fence in, in back on the, you know, in addition to the sound wall.
Second, and let's go to roll call.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Zister?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski? Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fields?
Aye.
Chair Campa?
Aye. Okay, with that, this, this item passes unanimously as well, thank you. So, and the next item, I guess, do I need to close public hearings with that? I'd like to bang the back gavel anyway. Okay, so, next item is, I think we are going to new business, item number four, update on the planning commission outreach subcommittee. Do you guys have a report, or?
We do, we do, oh, perfect, so. Can, can we, I, I have, I, I need a restroom round?
Okay.
Can we take three minutes, or?
I think so.
Sure.
Okay, I'm old.
We are back in session. So Commissioners Zister and Commissioner Cray are the members of subcommittee. Do you have a presentation, or are you?
We do.
Okay, so.
I'm waiting for Ken to.
Oh, okay, Ken, Ken is bringing it up, wonderful.
We'll keep it short and concise.
Thank you.
Okay, so, update on PC notification outreach research and recommendations by myself and Commissioner Cray, you go to the second, second slide. So, so our, our intention was to take a look at Campbell's notification outreach process, and to do this, we, we went out and gathered information from other local jurisdictions, we actually had a couple more on the list, but we, we ended up with seven other jurisdictions, as noted here, it's kind of, okay, I guess it's, so Saratoga, Palo Alto, Santa Clara, City of Santa Clara, Los Gatos, Morgan Hill, Cupertino, and the county contacted with the help of our director, who, good word for us, they were, the, their community development directors were cooperative, we asked them a short list of questions. Move to the next one. So, we, we, we asked them a very short list of questions, so that we didn't feel we wanted to, like, give them twenty questions, so we asked about their notification process to surrounding property owners and residents for projects that come before the planning commission. The questions included the, their methods, which would be like postcards, and notification newspapers, et cetera, emails, whatever. The, the criteria, criteria involves the distances for their notification, whether it be, as well as the timing on the notifications, and who received those notifications, whether they're owners and or occupants, and occupants, and then we ask if they commonly get complaints about not being notified. The response to that was yes. We also asked them about the, the use of their website to provide information on, on, on projects, a- a- as well as any other media that they used in terms of posting for notifications and projects they're in process. This included whether they listed specific projects on their websites, whether they had mapping, where people could go in and, and find, find an area, as well as other, other ways to do it via newsletters, or other, other information communications. So that's basically, it was a fairly short list of questions, and, and we have compiled that. information, raw data. And if you go to the next slide, we actually have just recently compiled the information. We haven't really reviewed it yet, so. But we took, you know, we took a quick look at this and all the jurisdictions have, have the same basic notification requirement. Some go farther in distance on larger projects and as, as far as a thousand feet, for example, and include in addition to owners, occupants, although that's not common. All the cities, all the cities have mapping on their websites, many of which are complicated or difficult to find or use. Just as an example, they're almost all in the planning area. In the planning area, it could be one or two levels down from the home site. And then, and then you kind of, in some cases, you have to dig even once you're in planning to find that. So it's, it's, it, it, in general, the cities don't make it really easy. I mean, if you think about the average person, wouldn't necessarily know to go to planning. Okay, so, so it makes it even harder for kind of person who's not familiar with the workings of a city. Some of the websites have additional listings and detailed information on larger projects. There are some good examples of cities where they've gone the extra distance to list, list major projects. One of the cities, I can't remember which one, was basically driven to it by the builder's remedy. They got so many builders remedies that they actually have an area specific to the listing of the builder's remedies projects and detailed information on it. But we have just accumulated this data and we are going to, if you go to the next slide, during the next few weeks, we're going to review, analyze and edit this data and put it into a report and include some recommendations in conjunction with staff reviewing it. And then our estimated deadline is late March or early April to have the report that we can provide. Commissioner Cray, do you have anything to add?
No, no, that's, that's where we are. Where it just turns out that every city has a different wrinkle, every city, county, they're all doing it slightly different, even though there's state laws that mandate the basics. And I will say one thing, and maybe this might always be a hot topic, but it, it happens to be a hot topic out there right now, public notification. There's a lot going on in the City of Santa Clara, City of Saratoga, couple of county Palo Alto is really looking at this, this, this subject closely. So it's actually a pretty good topic for us to hit at this time, but.
Actually, a couple of the cities have a apprehensive outreach communications piece that they've put together. And I know that that's what we're looking at, so. I believe Morgan Hill is, has been published, it's been out there for a while. And I haven't really looked at it in detail yet, but.
You know, I guess one, one wrinkle I'll bring up since it just came up in our meeting here is, you know, with the SB nine and the ministerial approvals. So the two items that are on, were on our agenda today, there were, I don't know, thirty five, forty property owners got notified of those. Once those are ministerial approvals, nobody, they won't get those notifications, so. You know, that's why the website, I think, and stuff like that are going to be way more important, so. I guess that's another reason why this is a timely topic right now, so. Anyway, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it together. I think it'll be an interesting area for us to look at.
Hey, well, thank you very much for that report. I can tell you from personal experience that, you know, I work with cities and counties for projects that we do for our clients. And sometimes it's extremely difficult finding things that even though spelled exactly as they give the titles to somehow their own search button in their website doesn't bring things up. So the trick is you go to Google, you Google that exacting and it takes you exactly to the thing that it took your forty five minutes to try to find and put it. So Google has the ability to reach those deep down, you know, sites. But thank you, thank you for your report. You know, this is great. Looking forward to the final report on this one. Okay, any questions for our subcommittee? Commissioner Majewski, no? Okay. Yes, seeing none. Next item is the planning commission fiscal year twenty twenty five work plan. Director?
Okay, give me a second to show my screen. So. Great, great. So city council, working with the city manager's office, has asked that each of the boards and commissions for the city Campbell provide a work plan they can work on year twenty six, which officially starts in July of this year, runs a full year. My understanding, past practice of this, prior to COVID, I wasn't here, is that commissions and ordinance commissions did this, practice stopped under COVID and the intent is to bring this back. Rather than my understanding is just for the council to understand what each board and commissions is working on. If necessary, provide feedback at the right opportunity. So each of the boards and commissions is assembling a draft work plan now, it's purpose of tonight. I dra, I put together a draft based on everything I know that staff will bring to you and what you're working on and purpose of night is to go through it. If we miss anything or add to it, then bring it to the city council. After tonight, next steps would be to, to, to bring it to the city council on March eighteenth. City council has asked that the staff rep and the chair of each commission attend, or named with Chair Kamkar. Maybe can attend and I'll attend.
Yes.
And from there, assuming council would accept, find any feedback as necessary that we give to the commission. What we have on the screen, I sort of put two things together and I was thinking of adding a third. So one is just to outline the rules and responsibilities outlined in state law. Plan commissions are very prescriptive, they're outlined in state law, pretty much every city has one. Your jurisdiction is land use and generally two parts. If there's some proposed modifications, the general plan and zoning, advise the council on those. And you are delegated as the decision-making body for certain approvals. After tonight, that won't be single family homes. But still the world of conditional use permits, site and architectural review permits, certain housing development permits, they'll be coming to you and on appeals of actions that would be at the administrative level. And of course, at this point, you do have to, the SARC committee and two representatives, it is on the work plan to come back to that for this fiscal year and do modifications for that. So part one is, is that on the screen, happy to take any feedback, that, that's generally coming right out of the state code and municipal code. Part two, I'll walk the commission through your work plan. Number one is basically what your duty is, is to schedule hearings and it's very small, isn't it? Pick that bigger. Schedule notes and conduct regular hearings on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month to conduct your regular business, which would be conditional use permits or recommendations on ordinances. Part two is, so what, what do you expect to come from you on the legislative updates? And I've looked at our work plan, still subject to adoption by council, but at this point, we have a couple of things in the pipeline. One is, we keep threatening to bring to you, and it will be soon, large omnibus miscellaneous zoning ordinance update, we'll have quite a lot of updates in it. Number one, number two, we're coming back with our multifamily design standards, sort of what we learned in the last year and a half of modifications. Number three, we are starting off on our Hamilton Avenue precise plan, was a priority plan in the general plan, that should be coming to you. There's an area roughly, let me see, roughly extending from Bascom in Hamilton west past Winchester, to which the general plan advisory committee advised when it was making advisements on the general plan that Campbell should do sort of a study, specific plan of this area. And I think the logic was, it's, it's a busy area, as you know, I'm on highway seventeen there. There are large developments around there, such as the Home Depot and Staples and been proposals around there, such as the Elephant Bar site. And then later on through the housing element, we did designate a lot of very high density housing development there, such as the Frye site. And, and part of that, one of our intentions with housing elements to transoring development, high density development, people have access to transit. We have a problem statement in that area is all the housing is proposed on one side of the freeway over the Frye. And if we build all that and you really want to get on the light rail, if you've ever actually walked across highway seventeen, it's not the most pleasant experience. So one thought was, you know, what could we do to sort of help that? The deep end of the bridge, the shallow end, perhaps the sidewalks or something. So the intent was to, to take into account all that new development posed around there. And then how to do improvements in that area, just to make it more walkable, multimodal. And now the same, and as you come off seventeen, there's been a lot of designations in the past that that is a gateway. These are things we could do to make it look more like a gateway. Broadly the purpose of that precise plan.
So by precise plan, are we talking about individual like lots or, or potential future development are going to get specific like zoning or?
I, yeah. To answer your question, good, good question, Chair Kamkar. The scope of the plan is, is pretty much focused on the public improvements in that area, less the zoning. We intentionally did a lot of zoning work, especially mostly in the housing element general plan there. I don't think the idea was a year and a half later, two years, rethink that. And that development just has not happened yet, high density development. It was more of, how do the improvements go in that area to accommodate the development and make it more walkable, multimodal, better.
Okay.
So that, that will be coming to you. Our historic preservation ordinance has been on the work plan for a while. We've had a bit of a staff bandwidth issue. I think once our miscellaneous ordinance is done, our senior planner, Daniel Fummel, will turn his attention back to that and go back to you. And then finally, we do have in the work plan, you might remember this, how the housing element, the missing middle SB ten. So the intent with this state allows you in single family neighborhoods, certain areas you can designate lots to upzone and allow up to ten units by right. And we want to be intentional if there's parts of the city where that could happen, so that ordinance should be going back to you sometime in the next fiscal year. So that's on a legislative work plan. Couple of other things which don't really fall within the four corners of the zoning ordinance general plan, but I've advised staff, staff of the departments to come and seek your advice, what is the Parks and Rec plan, which you've heard from our Parks and Rec Recreation Director. And one I know Commissioner Buckbinder is very interested in. We are starting to work on a CY multimodal plan. And that should be coming to you at certain parts for you to review and provide advice on. Last one, you know, I do have to add this, I missed it. We are about midstream on preparing a climate action plan. And to the extent there's land use components or areas you'd be interested in, I'll advise our staff to bring an update to you. See what's going on with that, provide input on the right ones. Part four of this is your ad hoc subcommittees. So I've listed out that you, the commission has the right to create a committee generally within the four corners of your charter or what have to do under the general plan to study, look at, make recommendations. And currently, I know the only active ad hoc subcommittee, of course, is the one you just reported on. I know, Matt, you and I talked, if you want to list also the SB six eighty four subcommittee as inactive or how would you like to classify that?
We're going to reactivate it.
Want to reactivate it? All right, so that's in addition, you've put on the work plan.
But I'm not sure if you're going to call it SB six eight four subcommittee. I think, I think it was going to be. We had a specific name for it, you know, that's probably more encompassing than just the six eight four component of. You know, we had thought six eight four, if it starts producing housing, may take a lot of the concerns away, but. But anyway, you know, we will let you know what the name is again. Start reporting on it. Okay?
Just to sort of make, I'm trying to think on what the name was, was it sort of the missing middle or something we can come away with tonight that I could put in the work plan?
I think the item that sort of got us started on it was this sort of gross net designation of the parcels, you know, previously when you said gross, you would go to center of the street as your calculation and then do your.
I think what would be good is if we can come up with a name and get back to you on that, Rob, so that we're more accurate.
Are there any other subcommittees I'm missing? I know several were created over the last year. I know some have finished the work, the commercial. But are we planning on doing another round of climate streamlining?
We talked about that.
We are.
Another round of what?
Yeah, if within the, so there's two, two parts of the world, one is housing, one is non-residential. It's been our intent on the non-residential to come back at some point. I think what we would want to do sometime in fiscal year twenty six is go back out to the brokers. And we have actually a broker on retainer, just poll on where the pain points are with business owners in our ordinances. I can't commit to you right now if that would come back to you in fiscal year twenty six, but we could.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So economic development, I know it's under your purview, Rob. It's not really under our purview, but neither is Parks and Recreation. So would there be an opportunity appropriate for us to have an opportunity? I mean, we got a preliminary presentation out of some time ago last year. And there's a, I don't know if it's finished yet, but there's an economic development plan coming along. And I, for one, would, would be, would love to be, I've actually gone through, scanned through the economic development plan and, and whether or not it could be appropriate for us to have a, a review or presentation of the, the plan and what's moving forward.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. There, there is definitely a lot of overlap between economic development and regulation. The economic development plan was adopted, I can't remember the month, May of last year. I know our interim economic development manager gave a sort of a preview of what was in the plan.
And there's a new manager coming, right?
What's that?
There's a new manager coming.
There, there currently is a recruitment process to hire an economic development manager. It's in, I think, I think during second interviews, that's successful, ideally the future person would start in the next two, three years. So that would probably be a good time to bring that back and just show the commission.
I, I just, just, you know, I personally, I worked in the private sector and, you know, I don't pretend to be an economic development expert, but working in private sector as a marketing person, there's some relative connection there. And so, and we have other people on the commission that have, I believe, relevant experience to provide input, so. My take on it.
Okay, you were on number four or?
Oh, yeah, the other thing for the subcommittee is we talked about potentially having a subcommittee to look at the, the fences and
Yeah, let's send them down on the possible.
Yeah.
You haven't created.
So if anyone's interested in that, think on that.
Now, one interested member, you know, we'd like to have two. Now, one interested member, you know, we'd like to have two as a minimum.
Technically, you could create a subcommittee of one. I'm not sure if you would need to. But normally they're folks. And you don't have to do that now. Come back at future time. But I'm happy to let you know, again, the department's not tone deaf to the issue of to ten continue to get fence exception permits, especially in that case study where we have a rash of examples that we've addressed, come back to you and talk about.
I'd have one of the.
Okay, so you had finished them before. You have a question?
I do have one other question. You mentioned SB ten slash missing middle ordinance, but that also include the SB eleven twenty three information we talked about, we've had some debate over what exactly you should do about the vacant block provision, that that would be a policy debate for a later time. Is that? But isn't that, I don't know the answer to that. Adam, I have to circle back to you. Okay.
Hey. And no other question. Rob, I think you have the floor. You had done number four. Number five is the.
That is correct. Yeah, the fifth is just training and education. So I listed out the two primary opportunities to you. One is to attend the annual California American Plan Association Conference, and I believe I remember right, I'm sure Camp Car attended last year. And the next one is September of this year. We do have money, all expense paid trip to Monterey, worst place in the world, think hard about it. I can give you dates, happy to send you down there. And then two, this one is required under Campbell ordinance, at least for new commissioners, first two years, attend the league academy. And the next option would be spring next year.
Spring of next year?
Spring of next year.
There was something in Roseville or?
It's happening in two weeks.
It's next week.
Commissioner, sorry, next week. Thank you. I should have this. Commissioner Fields and Majeski will be there as I will be with three panels, all of them, looking forward to it. Oh, boy.
Wow, now I really want to go. I do have actually a comment on this. Maybe it'll take ordinance to change. It will never do it. I feel like the requirement should be once per term you're required to go because looking at the agenda, I'm glad I waited like three years in between it because it's very similar agenda. And I think going two consecutive years is a little bit less benefit. But I could see going every four, there might be enough new state law and everything to require it. So if it was straightforward to stick that in some other broader update, I feel like that would be better than this two consecutive year requirement.
One more time, Commissioner Fields, what was the record need?
To change the requirement so that it's not your two consecutive years, instead it would be once per term. So you would go once every four years. Does anyone else feel strong in the answer?
I think that it, it didn't make sense to me to go two consecutive years and then not again, like been many years and this seems a little silly to have it that way. Yes, I'm on board with that.
So if I can chime in on that too, I've been to quite a few of these, you know, during my stint in San Jose and then here. And what I have found is, first of all, you can catch every single session because some of them are at the same time. And as you get more experience and you learn things, your interest changes from learning about Sequoia to learning about this and actually going and visiting, you know, some of the things, you know, so I definitely understand your concern about going to consecutive one. I'd like to make a friendly amendment, you know, to your, to your request. How about two per term? So that you go to the two, and especially if it's Southern California, Northern California, and I think they usually go back and forth between them for you to get the different flavors of the state, you know. A two per term, this way they're not immediately consecutive, but allows you to, and you know, and and maybe not make a requirement, but you could go up to two or whatever, maybe minimum one. But if you want to go to more, because I'll, I'll, every time I go, I get it, I either reminded or learn new stuff and to me. So that's a friendly amendment if you will accept.
Yeah, I would, I get the impression we would support you going to more than one if you wanted to. But maybe the minimum is one.
One, yeah. It is definitely commitment though, you know, because you're there half a week and, you know, if you're working, especially private sector.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment I would be that if you go the first year, you know, you haven't really gotten much experience to ask the right questions or to, and so you know, I kind of like the two per term and then you can like go first year and then the third year or whatever. It's like, you know, and then you get that done and it's, it's like but by the third year, you're, you're probably, you're, you should be, you know, capable to be like able to absorb and and ask the right questions, that kind of thing. So to me, the first year is like, yeah. You, you, you're not totally with it, you know, you're kind of semi lost, especially if it comes earlier in your turn. I don't know when it would come in your term, but, but, you know, one, and it being maybe your first year, it's like you probably need another, you know, additional opportunity. I would, I would go for two a term. But.
Would you, would you make it required or would you?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. I think so. Yeah.
How does the commission feel about requiring two per term versus recommend versus?
Well, it's presently required to, right?
It's too consecutive.
Consecutive. I'm just saying, let's get rid of the consecutive and give it a little bit more flexibility so you can like skip a year.
Yeah. What does the commission think about that? If we're gonna change it, you know, what's going?
Yeah, you definitely don't want to go two years in a row. Having been to a lot of conferences, there's not and some legitimate changes to make the time investment for second year value.
So, so would you go for two required or two recommended?
Well, I think it should be recommended because there's a lot of responsibilities that commissioners are juggling. So.
I'm, I'm with that. I would, I think we could, if people want to go to the second one, I think we should support that, but it's, we would also be doubling the cost to the city if we increased it because I, I, I said one per term because I figured that wouldn't actually increase the budget impact, but we had two per term, we had two terms, all of a sudden you're got four.
Commissioner Craig, Commissioner Bucander.
Yeah, I actually, I'm surprised that, I didn't know there was a requirement to two years in a row. I only went to one. It was my first year on. We were even, we were even looking at single family housing. And it was really helpful. I mean, I'm really glad I went once, but I, I can, I just seems like requiring people to go, you know, more than once is asking a lot. I've already given a lot of time.
I'm not sure it would require somebody who gets a second term to go again. I hope not. It says each new commissioner. So it's like the question is, if you get a second term, it's not required, right? Okay, so it's, it's, but I'm okay with one, one for the first term. I'm okay with one for the first term.
I'm hearing more like maybe one minimum and then two recommended. That's, that's what I.
That's fine.
Yeah. Commissioner Majewski, would you like to chime in as well?
Yeah, I think it's helpful to go to two, but if we're hoping that we get maybe people that are from different economic backgrounds or younger people interested in this, I think having two required, like half a week missing work is pretty rough. You know, if you ask me four years ago, if I could do that, I would say absolutely not. I can't afford to miss that much work. So I think one sounds good.
Okay.
Great.
I think then we have it. One required.
Okay, just so I, and I can put this in my notes, make sure the, and maybe you're with me on March eighteenth, pass on the general consensus of the commission is a recommendation to go from two to one your first four year term. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. That's all I have. Any additional feedback on these four areas or things missing on putting in the draft work?
By the way, I would ask, just ask that we get a good report from Commissioner Majewski and then Fields on the, on the conference, because there's always some good stuff there. So we tend to forget that, or we should really let these commissioners report to all of us on that. And the other thing I mentioned, just to pat on the back to the city, I guess the Park and Recs did a real smart thing. Speaking of the Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan, they have, you know, they have a real popular run on Valentine's Day. They're ending the packet that they gave all the runners, they, they had a big piece of paper inviting or letting everybody know about a meeting that I think they already happened a couple of days ago about a possible pedestrian bike bridge over highway seventeen near Hamilton, which my God, that would cost, but what a great idea if we could do it. But anyway, it was a really good idea that they did that. I mean, they hit the perfect audience and I hadn't heard about that otherwise anywhere else. So I'm glad they did it. I was not able to attend, but at least I got my ears attuned to a pretty interesting part of that Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan.
Excellent. Now regarding feedback to director regarding these items, you know, I think requiring feedback at two days would be a little bit short notice, you know. So can they come back to you, you know, by the next meeting? Or feedback if they want to add anything or subtract anything from?
Oh, the commission? Let's see, you meet next?
On March eleventh.
When is your work plan due?
Yeah, it's, well, it's going to the eighteenth council. Typically, those are due into the agenda prep system down about a week in advance. Bit tight, you know, I technically could put a placeholder in and bring it back. And if there's last minute changes, we can drop it out.
Just in case, you know, because I, I know for today it was such a short notice, you know, from when we got the work plan to getting back to you tonight, I think that would be not too short. But anyway, okay, if there's nothing else?
Yeah, two, nothing else, but let me just make sure I got two things, I guess three things. So what I heard tonight is on the ad hoc subcommittee waiting on Commissioner Ostrowski and Camp Car. Come back with the appropriate name for the ad hoc subcommittee board created. I'll acknowledge the planning commission may create an app subcommittee looking into fence issue. I'll put on potentially, we could come back on commercial permit streamlined during the next fiscal year. And that will provide a presentation on the economic development plan. I'd probably make more apparent that you did give direction on modifying the SARC committee, just so the council's aware of that, so make that a bit more explicit in the work plan. And your advice to council to modify the ordinance to have one training. I also thought just for format to be transparent with the council. In addition to the FY twenty six work plan, I thought I'd show my calendar. There we go. I'd show the accomplishments you had. Actually, maybe bringing this back to you is, is better to review that, your accomplishments during this fiscal year. And we could list out the number of projects reviewed and approved or recommended council and work of your ad hoc subcommittee work, just councils that are involved. So I was gonna add that at the end.
Can we also have a, like a update on how we're doing with our Reno numbers, you know, how, I know.
It's the APR, we get, we do that every year around April, right? Yeah, I was gonna put that on the director's reports, just to tidy up this side of them.
Okay. Sounds good. Wonderful. Thank you. If there's nothing else?
I have one question.
Yes, one question.
I saw an article in San Jose Spotlight saying that the El Grande project was coming back for review with the planning commission in a couple of months. Expect it. Yeah. Are they getting a new, doing a different design or something? Like, what's going on? They have reapplied for a new approval at a higher density. It's in the process. Okay.
Adam, do you get the, do you get the listings that are new applications listings?
The DRC?
Yeah, it was on one of them.
I, I do, but I don't always read it. I saw that, I saw that on my feed.
It was on a, a few, a few, a couple of weeks ago, I think. Yeah, they're upping, the upping the number of units.
Oh, boy.
And, and it's maybe going taller. I'm not sure. Again. Yeah.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. I'm sorry.
Real quick, director's report.
Sorry.
I don't take much of your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Just to let you know, last meeting council did adopt an interim ADU ordinance, I think our planners referred to that, the implement of the new state laws. We did extend the SB four fifty ordinance and this is the ordinance that basically took single family away by the commission and consolidated SB nine with single family. So those happened last meeting. On the APR report, that does go to council at the next meeting. So this is our annual park support and housing production. Report is not out published. I will tell you as of today on the trend line, we are, Campbell is not on a track to meet its arena. There's a lot of factors within our control. I'm sorry, there's a lot of factors out of our control and some factors. I'd say broadly based on everything, I know the, we've put a lot of our eggs in the high density housing basket. And between supply chain costs and interest rates, the high density housing market, it's not working very well at this moment. I have talked to staff and done some developer outreach. And in the report, I'm going to recommend to council, we actually do come back with some potential policy options. If you want to shift and look at ways that we could encourage more housing development, just knowing where the markets at. So two things, one is once that report's out, happy to work with Ken to give you a link to it. And as we work our way back to council with some potential policy options, expect to stop by.
So I'm sorry, but one clarifying question. So on SB four fifty, it, it addresses single family property. So if a property were to be subdivided and then the, and then lots sold off and whoever bought the lot wants to come in and put a single family in that lot, that's when SB four fifty will will, I guess, take effect, I mean, for that particular application. Because or is it for, is it single family structure or is it single family zoning? I guess is my question.
Well, I'll answer it in a broad term. So broadly, my understanding of SB four fifty, and I've heard of the technical staff that's not here. Where am I way in? It generally consolidated our single family zoning standards, SB nine standard, so you can't treat them separately. And since today in a single family zone, you can do an SB nine project, which means a lot split, a duplex. I think the answer to your question is yes, true.
Okay, so like an SB nine type of a zoning, okay.
It's one of the setting as well.
Okay, but if it's not a single family zoning, it's like a multifamily zoning, then SB four fifty would then apply.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and it's a bit of, my words, cognitive dissonance, this applies in single family zoning, that in effect by implementing it, single family zoning in effect, it's not, you can do duplexes in those.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So in hearing nothing else, nothing else. So adjourn, we adjourn this meeting, the planning commission to March eleventh at seven PM in City Hall Chambers, seventy Notre Street. Thank you.
Thank you.